Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our business meeting this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Move to 1.01, call the meeting to order to 1.02, Declaration of the Court. I believe we have something that we need to excuse.
Uh, first, I would like to move that we excuse Vanessa. Ken Block?
Second? Oh, sorry. Second? All right. Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lones?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Motion carries moving to 1.03, adoption of the agenda.
Move we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second?
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lones?
Yes.
Mrs. De Garden?
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Now it is time for 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have some wonderful special guests this evening from Island that I would love to have us meet and then pledge allegiance. So come on down.
So you can go over by the students if they're gonna do it from there.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, God.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much for doing that. Moving to 1.05, schools are on. We have Island Elementary for the month of September. Welcome. All right, well, we want to thank you for having us here this evening. I have several people that you can see here with me. I have Wyatt, who is one of our fourth grade students. Journey, who's one of our third grade students. Mrs. Bell, of course, our assistant principal. Ms. Ming, who teaches fourth grade, and Mr. Pearson, who is one of our school counselors. And so, uh, Island always needs to be September School of the Month. And we are just starting our year, so we decided to talk a little bit about summer school this evening and some of the learning experiences that our students got to participate in through the summer month. Uh, so as you can see up here, we have our district vision. And of course, part of our district vision is always helping students achieve their own personal goals for academic excellence. And that's really what summer school is all about. Giving kids the opportunity to refine and practice the skills from the previous year so that they're even more prepared for the upcoming school year. And of course, we have our Ritter School District Commission up there as well. And this is really meant to be a support for our students. Particularly over the last several years, some of our students have missed some key concepts throughout the pandemic time. So this has really allowed us the opportunity to provide additional supports so that our students, um, can fill in some of those gaps that they might have missed throughout the year. And of course, our equity statement. You can see that it talks about some cultural competency up there, but we also know that really equity is about making sure that every student has exactly what they need to achieve. And this is the first time in summer school traditionally being made it a program where students are participating and our interventions are invited to participate. But for this year, we had students participating for a variety of reasons based on their need. And I know Mrs. Bell will talk about that a little bit more. Um, but really, we have students who have been virtual and had been in a classroom. So this was an opportunity for them to kind of lean themselves back into a classroom space by coming to summer school a little bit, um, you know, fewer students, a little bit shorter day. Um, allows some of our students who have some attendance issues to come and participate as well. So really, there were several reasons, um, students were able to participate this year. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bell just to talk for a minute kind of about our process for planning for summer school.
Yeah, so in March, we started out with identification of students. And so, we prioritized certain groups of students, um, who received Tier Three interventions with us, students, um, that have high EDP, also students that are English language learners, um, students like Mrs. Conley said, who either had some attendance issues with us during the year, students also returning from virtual, um, virtual classes, um, and students who were on reading plans. Our communication with families started in March during, uh, parent teacher conferences. We approached families that we would have liked to invite, talked to them about that during the conferences. And then we also followed up with many, many, many phone calls. And it became kind of all hands on deck to make sure that the families that we were inviting actually filled out the paperwork and, um, got processed in time and got everything set up in time so that they can start summer school and be successful. Um, then in April, we determined groups and interventions. So we looked at, um, uh, student data, the most current student performance data, like the bar reading sets that they were in, looking at their intervention data, looking at their math data, to make sure that the groupings of students made sense and, um, and got their needs met during summer school. Then in May, we did some staff trainings, which included logistics and curriculum professional development to our teachers, especially using our collaborative classroom materials. And, um, it also included organizing and getting all of our materials organized for students and adults. Seeing as though our, our session was held at Wyland's, um, it involved quite some planning and organization on our teachers' part to make sure that all the materials got to the school in time and got unpacked and, and computers were delivered and that students have what they needed to learn on the first day. Uh, so it was, it was fun. It was a fun experience to be in another building, collaborating with, you know, another school, another set of administrators. I think that was nice for us to, um, to thought partner on certain things. And, um, we had a total of 122 students who enrolled in summer school. We invited many, and that's how many we ended up with in our program.
Ms. Ming will share a little bit about what happened during the day in terms of instruction.
So we started the morning with reading instruction. And the way we did reading was we, um, looked at the kids' bar sets and where they were, and they actually moved on. So, um, maybe you were assigned to my class, but you may have some to your school for reading. We use, uh, the bar sets. Um, we also use, um, iReady. So I think it did a lot of teamwork with the students and independence. And when I'm working with a reading group, you need to be responsible for your learning. I have worked with kids flip rates, and they've worked really, really hard this year. Our goal was that, that they came in at a bar six, when they left, and they had caught up at least a year. My kids, I had seventeen, I think sixty-seven percent of them moved in a tighter year in their reading, um, which is a really big deal to help them, um, continue on. So at the end, we said that we did not, after the schools, it's a low school and started that new level, um, and making it to a new school, in a competitive classroom.
So Ms. Ming, to make, I'm sorry, to make a year's worth of growth, at least in the summer, is significant. What do you, what do you like contribute the most leverage to?
Um, one, the bar sets, small group sizes. And really, the students really buckled down and focused with their centralized iReady and interventions and, um, really, the teachers pulled together and said, you know, this is what we wanna see them grow. Um, just, the kids really were good. Some of the students we had, some of them were really dedicated, and they worked really hard. Um, I think the ones that didn't make that growth was absent. They didn't come to school or they were late or, um, just different things like that. Or just didn't put in the effort. But it was some really good turnout for the students.
I think, can I just jump in? I think to clarify too, so a lot of that growth was measured through IXL. But with being a leader, they followed the program. And so, six weeks of, um, IXL puts you through about a set. And it depends on which grade level you're at or which sector at, um, kind of what that equates to in terms of grade level. So for example, um, sets one, two, and three are really like a kindergarten level. Sets four and five are first grade levels. You can see not much people being distributed by grade level, if that makes sense. Um, so every student participated in the six weeks of instruction, which, which boosted you up, um, one steps level. But a lot of that measurement came from IXL.
Now math, uh, which is one of my favorites. We use, um, Xern, Fish Tank, um, and there's one program called, I don't know, that one called Fish Tank. And what we did is we, again, plugged it down from all the teachers. What school does your child need? And we took that, so they had competition issue or they had fractions. We took that into body of kids by skill level. This set of kids needs fraction. These kids need efficient subtraction. And again, we split, they were in my homeroom, but inside of that, we split up like two different teachers. So my high class, Xern and Fish Tank, I really, really loved. Fish Tank was really fun. It was very engaging. So it was, um, very specific to fractions. I have bigger kids with skip graders that were going to sit through a, um, that were struggling with fractions. And, you know, it's very explicit teaching. And by the end of the summer, all of those kids were able to pass. Pretend that they averaged like one out of ten, I think, with some questions. I think they all only did ten out of ten when they took it at the end of the summer. Which was a really nice growth to see them focus on that one skill that they really need. Boost them over. And then again, they're a bit comprehensive.
And then, of course, we want to support the whole child out there at summer school. So Mr. Pearson will talk a little bit about the social emotional side of learning.
So like I said, we talked about really wanting to kind of support the entire child, the whole child throughout the summer. So this really was a really awesome chance to do so. And so, we had some different things that we did in terms of really supporting the whole child. Um, one thing I think that we really do well with Ritter is that like we're more than just brick and mortar buildings. We're like a community, we're a family. We're looking to hone in on that, uh, community and that family-based atmosphere by bringing in different events, like Fridays, you can do like these fun little events. And it makes like a fun little event to most people, but to our kids, it was a reason to come. It was to build that character, see everyone like wearing a shirt for that day or that week. It just, I mean, that, it really helped foster that sense of community that we, that we literally have up at Ritter, um, what we stand upon. Um, we had some really cool, and then we had some really cool, um, opportunities to kind of, for the, um, for some of our students to engage in other ways as well. We had some therapy doctors that they had to come in, kind of see some therapy doctors. It's kind of cool. Some of the kids were a little scared. Uh, some kids were really kind of enthusiastic about that. Just like, uh, some different ways in which we were able to meet the children, where they were at, and really build some of those social emotional skills. And then also, um, we had, uh, one school counselor, um, per building, um, this summer. And so, that was really cool to really work with some of those kids, um, some of those social emotional skills that the kids are still working on. Um, we had a couple of kids in summer school that were, they had a harder time in the school year, like, you know, finding that rhythm, finding that balance. And then, you know, coming to summer school with a very small class size, a little bit more individual attention, we were able to really hone in on those social emotional skills, really work with them on, anyway, we had one child who really needed to, he had a little bit of work on trying to figure out how to, you know, regulate some of those emotions and stuff like that. And we were really able to hone in on those skills. And I think that this year, it's very happens in the classroom. But what we're really able to do is, once we get those kids, um, able to establish those skills, those social emotional skills, we've seen them have a really good summer and have transitioned into a really good start to the school year. And some of those kids that were maybe feeling a little bit lost last year have seen really great successes this year, um, due to the fact that we were able to really hone in on some of those social emotional skills and support the whole child, um, during the summer setting.
So before I turn it over to our students and let them share their thoughts and opinions about summer school, I did just wanna shout out to, um, Lauren Hager, who is an interactionist over at Wyland, who served as the lead teacher for both of our schools. Um, like Mrs. Bell said, it was really great to collaborate with another building and, you know, learn how different buildings operate and just learn from each other. So I wanna shout out to the Wyland staff as well and to our Island teachers. We had actually ten Island teachers who came and taught summer school. And then, of course, Mr. Pearson was there with us as well. Um, so it was a really nice, um, collaboration between the two buildings and, um, you know, a really enjoyable way to spend our summer. So I am gonna turn it over to Wyatt and Journey. I told them I would ask them some questions, but I think they're a little nervous. But can you guys tell us, um, did you like summer school? It's right there.
Yeah.
So what was the best part about summer school? You don't have to talk aloud or perhaps. What was your best part, Journey?
That I got to do math and reading.
Do you feel like you got better at math and reading?
Yes.
How do you know?
Because when I was able to do more work, when I was able to do subtracting.
Did you subtract? Yeah. So Wyatt, what about you? Did you enjoy summer school?
No.
Tell me some of your favorite parts about summer school.
Ready.
You've been laughing all week, could be practicing a little bit. Wyatt, about iReady, guys. You wanna tell everybody what iReady is? They may not know. What's iReady? Where do you do iReady? You do it on the?
On the computer.
You do it on the computer. And did you do math or reading or both?
Both.
So out of those fun kind of activities that Mr. Pearson said, did you have a favorite one that you guys?
Yeah. Yeah.
What was your favorite?
I don't know.
What were some of the activities? Can you tell us? But one of the activities was? Talk about that?
Beer float.
Beer floats. If you guys had the opportunity to go to summer school next summer, would you wanna go?
Yeah.
And we're gonna let you guys ask them some questions as well. They have to coach them.
So a question I have for the, the group, so, you know, we had, uh, summer school, two buildings going into one. We knew there would be some challenges with that. Like from your perspective, being a close part of summer school, is that something we should consider doing again? Is it something we should stay away from? What are your thoughts about finally two buildings into one school this summer?
I'd have to be able to teach you to figure that out. So for me, it, it looked very smooth. It was nice to be able to, um, bounce ideas off of the fourth grade teacher at kind of times because here, what happened, but it was, I mean, for me, it went very smoothly. But again, I just had, I completed them, I decided. There wasn't a whole lot of, of me with the different kids.
I think what I've learned is there was definitely some bonuses in that collaboration piece. I think what we've kind of learned is that building cultures do vary between buildings, even though we have same routines, but cultures vary. So for example, just things we take for granted, dismissal. You know, we have our clear process that we can go through really quickly. But doing it in another building for the first time is like, wait a second, how does this work? Even when someone tells you, you have to kind of live it. And essentially, half the summer school staff was living it together for the first time. So it was more of those logistical kind of pieces that we had to think through and process through and, you know, refine as we moved on. But, but truthfully, like I said, I think we learned a lot from each other and just talking to her building examples and things.
I think that like it really helped, like, I think Ritter is like already a pretty like small feeling district. It's a very big district, but a very small feeling district. And that almost like helped end aside of that, when I got to work with another building, that Comic Con, I would wait. And I get to work pretty heavily with some of the Wyland teachers. I got to see them and I waited at them, like I knew them in passion, and I wouldn't have known them, you know? And so, it made that kind of, that smaller vibe even smaller for me. And I was able to see my coworkers, not just from my school, but not just school and school and school, right to Ritter School District. And so, I was able to really feel like a district would work with other schools.
That's good feedback. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. And I, so I was at, I was the Wyland side of summer school. And it was great. He was so sweet. He bought up, he brought us donuts. Like, it was just a very, it was just a very open community. And yeah, it was, I mean, it was wonderful. So it was great to meet the teachers and being at another school right now, it's just nice to kind of mingle with other teachers and staff from other schools. I, I loved it. The only thing I would suggest is, um, it's a lot of work for the lead teacher. So maybe to, uh, have a lead teacher from Island as well as, um, Wyland or however the schools are put together. I'm so sorry for joining in.
Thank you.
That's why I told you, I didn't have to teach. That was a lot of kids that had to sort through the assignments and classes, but it's, yeah.
Journey, Wyatt, I want to thank you so much for coming and being so brave. I'm gonna ask you just a couple of easy questions. Do you feel like going to summer school has helped you going back to school? Yes or no? Yes. Okay, and since you've been back in school, what is your favorite thing that you've gotten back to? So in your, in your fourth grade classroom, what's been your favorite thing from your fourth grade classroom? Have you had to do some of those, so, you know how you talked about iReady? Didn't feel like you could do that again in your grade? Do you feel like now that you're here now that you did iReady? Kind of? So you like the iReady? I can honestly tell you when I was in school, recess was my favorite. That's an okay answer too. Journey, what's your favorite?
My favorite is lunch.
What comes right after lunch? Right after lunch comes recess. You got that right. Recess and lunch. Okay. That's okay. At least your stomach's up.
So, so who's your most favorite principal?
Anybody with any other questions?
I think that was awesome. I think we got more benefits from putting the two buildings together than just two achievement. I think it worked out at all levels. And, uh, that's something that we really have to strive to do. We are a small community. And the closer we can get everybody together and talk and visit and bounce up ideas from each other, I think that the more tight our community will be more, you know, and appreciate all the hard work. Yeah, that was good feedback to get more, more than one person leading, uh, leading charge. You might feel overwhelmed with, with two different ships coming together. So, uh, yeah, there's, there's room to improve, there's room for thought. I'm, I'm just glad that they had a good time and they, they achieved. That's, that's the whole purpose of it.
It really was. And as you walk through the halls, you can see some of the faces. And I think our attendance was better. Um, and so, you know, I think that's a result of people feeling comfortable and wanting to come. So I do have a question. You said that there was 122 students. Were those Island students or was that two schools together? That's just, all right.
I think Wyland is about 114, something.
I think, yeah. It was basically had a half a school in there.
That's awesome.
That was great.
And that's great to give that opportunity and open it up to kids. Cause kids do better when there's a structure and, you know, to have something to come to. And let's just face it, it's a great place to see their friends. And it's exciting to see their friends too, so. That's what I was gonna say, like, you know, sometimes kids will say, oh, I wanna do summer school. But soon as you're gonna get there, you're gonna like it because most of your friends are there. Right? They really do like drive off that social connection throughout the summer too. That is hard to do sometimes in the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Moving to 1.06, report of closed session. We met in closed session on August 11th and the 22nd for the purpose of a discussion of personal and student personnel items. Moving to 1.06, do we have any public comments for this meeting? Nothing filled out? All right, we'll move to our reports. 2.01, the president's report. Ritter's homecoming is just two weeks away. Our Huskies are gonna be playing McLaurin North. On Friday, September the 23rd, we will celebrate our five newest Hall of Fame inductees, including Joanne Hornbeck, class of 1962, Deron Jacob, class of 1992, Don Quante, class of 1981, Jerry Zeiten, class of 1969, and Dr. George R. Alvin III, our 2022 Lifetime Achievement Award recipient. On Saturday, the annual parade takes place at eight, or nine AM, but we have to report at 8:30. I have it in my mind, so I do not like. The homecoming theme is, "Ritter, let the games begin." The Huskies take on McLaurin North Stars in the Homecoming Football Game at 1 PM at Moorfield. We are looking forward to a wonderful homecoming weekend. And that concludes my report. And we will move right into 2.02, superintendent's report, Dr. Chris Gilroy.
Thank you, Dr. Alvin. So board members, we'd like to recognize our friends at the Ritter CoCare Food Pantry. Uh, Ray Baer was to be with us this evening, but was unable to, uh, join us, as was Angela Gobble. She's the president of the board of the CoCare Pantry, which is a separate 501(c)(3) that we partner with, um, to address food security in the Ritter community. So under Ray's leadership, as well as, uh, Angela and the board, uh, the Food Pantry is serving more families than ever. It's grown to the second largest pantry in the county. Uh, just this past week, uh, they hit a high in terms of customers served. A hundred and thirty-eight, uh, families were served, uh, in that week. Uh, so, yeah, significant, uh, significant, 138 families in one day, serving more than 500 families, uh, in a week. So the capacity is certainly grown because they have volunteers, they have the space um, to address in their mission the toxic stress that comes with, uh, food insecurity. So in order to access the pantry, which is at the Husky Support Center, families must live within the Ritter boundaries. Uh, it's in the Husky Support Center. Uh, all donations, uh, to the pantry are, are needed and appreciated. Uh, the pantry is very financially secure. They're very sound financially. Dwight serves as the treasurer of the pantry. He's on the board. Uh, one thing the pantry could use right now is more volunteers. Uh, a number of, uh, a number of volunteers are of an advanced age. And so, a lot of the heavy lifting that's, um, required sometimes with some of the shipment of food, some of the shipments of food, uh, some of the volunteers, they could use some assistance with that. So if you could help to get the word out, that'd be great. Uh, our theme for this year, as you heard it from, uh, Mr. Pearson, is the victory is in the classroom, making sure that we're focused on achievement for every child. Uh, aligned, uh, in line with that theme, uh, as a district, we've always provided those wraparound supports and structures um, to make sure that there are no obstacles to every child achieving in the classroom. Uh, board members, I think you should be congratulated and, and, and appreciated for your leadership and making sure that we created a sustainable future for the pantry. Because if you remember, uh, four years ago, uh, the future of the pantry was not at all certain. And they were within two months of closing their doors. But with moving forward with the Husky Support Center, we've guaranteed their future. And there's very strong leadership in place right now. So something we should all feel very grateful about. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gilroy. I'm moving to 2.03, student representative report. Mr. Terrence Pluck.
Good evening, everybody. Very good board members. First report, so very, um, I mentioned notice that, uh, Island and the schools were together, learning like that, uh, collaboration. Uh, so that was on my agenda to also visit schools with, uh, your bright business, uh, to give, uh, a glance at, uh, other environments are besides Ritter High School. Um, also, we've been meeting with clubs and activities, um, to see how their perspective are, are about, uh, building and improvements or positive things that we can continue with. Um, beginning of the school year has been very peaceful, uh, peaceful transition. And I noticed, uh, last year, there was a very long line of people waiting for schedules. This year, that has not been an issue. Um, I make this prayer goes to our counseling department for those who help, get our students regular classes. There's been a large amount of engagement with sports. I think that is great for us to connect outside of the classroom, outside of the building, just to, uh, be with one another as a community, as Ritter is a, a nice community. Ideas are required for students to enter to the building if they are turning. Uh, I think that is very positive for us as a safety issue, um, that has been addressed. So I appreciate that, uh, you're helping. Join us for homecoming on September 19th and 24th. We're celebrating, um, and then our parade. Look forward to seeing most of you all, if not all. There.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Absolutely. We appreciate your report. Thank you so much. Moving to 2.04, Special School District Board. This is Jennifer Lo.
Um, so the governing council meeting is coming up on September 19th at 7:00 PM. And our PAC meeting is coming up September 20th. No, it's not. I'm gonna let Rob talk about PAC.
So just a couple of things on PAC. Um, so SSD PAC, that's the SSD PAC. For SSD is having a family engagement barbecue next Wednesday, the 14th. So if there is anybody, please let me know in advance. We need to be sure that we get the numbers to them for food. Please, our PAC- Please, our PAC...
Where is that?
That would be held at SSD. Can you give me an address, please?
It's on Clayton Marona Dallas.
I know where it is. I can drive there without thinking about it. I just don't know what that address is. And then, so due to the HEAC issues at the administrative building, we are canceling the September PAC meeting. And we'll get it to ground running in our October. So, due to the HEAC, we just decided it's better than trying to rearrange and enable all of that. And then, I want to also let you guys know that we just completed the, this special school district does every four years, a public review committee. I sat on that committee this time. And I want to give a shout out to special school districts. And Dr. Keenan, one of our recommendations was to create a kind of a leadership team. That so, special school district is governed by the governing council. They're governed by the Board of Education and then the Parents Advisory Committee. And so, we had for a long time felt like three different groups doing three different things and then we're getting that communication together. And so, that was one of our recommendations. Dr. Keenan has jumped on that wholeheartedly. And she has, we had our first meeting this evening. So, Dr. Keenan and I have been with each other since 5:30. So, we did our first meeting tonight and bringing those three groups together. So, there's a lot of good things happening in special school districts to help better the communication and the services that we're providing here for our students.
Thank you, Rob. I'm always thinking that great connection between Ritter and SSD. So, I appreciate it.
That's it? All right, thank you so much. So, we'll move right into 2.05, MSBA, NSBA report. Yes. Great presentation over here.
My pleasure.
Next time, you just sit there and stare at me. I'm not going to say I'll do it. Can we please start the report? Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report for the month of September. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the release of this year's state assessment data. The preliminary results released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show some improvement over the prior year, but state totals have not yet reached pre-pandemic levels. English Language Arts had mixed results by grade level. Math and science scores increased in all grades and courses, while social studies showed slight decreases in proficiency. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Diemen had this to say about the results. Districts and charter schools across the state continue to face unique challenges during the 21-22 school year while working hard to focus on the well-being and academic success of students. Nothing about this past school year was typical. We must remain vigilant in educating our students. And I urge everyone to review the data through an informational lens, using these key takeaways to shape how state and local resources are best deployed to support ongoing student success. The COVID-19 pandemic continued to cause learning disruptions, periods of quarantine, and chronic absenteeism of both students and staff during the past year. Meanwhile, the state's Blue Ribbon Commission, charged with developing strategies to address teacher recruitment and retention challenges in Missouri, is continuing its work. The commission held a public hearing in August to gather input on teacher shortage issues. Among those testified before the commission was Timpin Art Teacher and Hettis County R-12 Superboard Member Shawn Harris. Salaries are so low that new and veteran teachers are having to find, oftentimes, not always, a second job in order to make ends meet, in order to support themselves or their families. In April of this year, a survey came out and found Missouri was 50th out of 50 states when it came to teacher salaries and pay. Because of that, we are seeing people leave this field. We are seeing people not enter this field because of low pay. It's difficult to find substitutes when teachers leave and fill those gaps that need to be filled. Sometimes when those teachers find a second job after a long day of working, they go to their second job, which takes away from time with their failing, takes away time from themselves to have the opportunity to wind down. And that's not fair. The statewide survey of Missouri teachers, principals, and superintendents, conducted by the commission, shows strong support for increasing the main salary for teachers for wellness days and for student loan forgiveness. The Blue Ribbon Commission is scheduled to present its recommendations to the State Board of Education in October. There's still time to register for the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators to be held in Kansas City November 3rd through 5th. This year's conference will include three general sessions, including keynote speaker Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersey, more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and much more. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. You also can register to attend the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working with MSBA member districts. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented by MSBA Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. On a personal note, this is my final board report program as I am retiring from MSBA after 35 years. It has been an honor to work for such an outstanding organization and to support the work of school boards and school board members throughout the state. And so, thanks for allowing me to share some time at your board meeting. And so long from Columbia.
I'm going to change to... So, as he had said, that we have the annual conference coming up November 3rd through the 5th in Kansas City. I know we've talked about NSBA and deciding what we want to do there. It might be a good idea for us to get that as part of one of our planning sessions, to talk about where we want to go with NSBA, to decide, you know, look at what the other offerings are and decide if you want to go there. And then, seeing that, would everybody be okay if we sent a letter of thanks and congratulations to Brent?
Brent has been an awesome force for getting out the word from MSBA everyone over the years.
And he's always great to see at the conferences. Any other questions? I can conclude my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lomans. Great job. So, then we'll be moving to the business items. 2.01 is a special school district partnership agreement. We have Mrs. Julie An and we also want to welcome Dr. Elizabeth Keenan, as well as Dr. Shakita McRae and Ms. Andy Fowles. Absolutely. I want to share with them a personal note. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
So, we're here to also answer any questions that we have and also, again, show that we are a partnership and work closely together and would like for you to approve our partnership agreement. I think over this year, this has been a way for us to make sure that we're communicating effectively with each one of our boards and with our different tenants and with the leadership team. And so, I think that it's strong under Shakita McRae's leadership. And I think that the model that we have having a single district, every director has one director, every director is in one district only, whereas before they were, you had a split between you and your colleagues. So, I think that continuing to support that, we definitely see from superintendent review from the leadership team has been helping us get better and making sure that we can continue to use part of students in the district. We should be supporting every district in a way that meets the needs of students in our system.
Additionally, I would like to add that it is a pleasure to work with Julie, as well as Dr. Keenan and partners, to ensure that we support the special education needs of all students, but also to explore opportunities to support all students within the Ritter School District. It has been a pleasure to work with you for the last three years as we have problem solved identification of leadership support from the director level to the special education coordinator level, but also supported with those critical pieces for our instructional and support staff. Of course, around the county and around the nation, we know that we're all impacted by staff shortages. So, we are working seamlessly behind the scenes to ensure that we're able to navigate resources and identify human capital to bring into each of our districts to ensure that we are supporting our students. It's my understanding that Angie, as well as Julie, provided me with updates from the partnership agreement recently. And just to not take too much of your time, this year, we wanted to ensure that we focus on the equity, ensuring that we look at those ethical resources, but also monitoring what are the needs of our staff, knowing that the past two, three years have been impacted by COVID. So, how do we really listen to them and ensure that we are supporting them and their true need and allowing them to be a part of the decisions that are being made throughout the Ritter School District, but also the special school district? And in addition to that, we want to ensure that we continue that piece, but we also develop a goal to ensure that we monitor that piece as well, too. So, again, we thank you for being great partners. We're always open to criticism, constructive, learning, growing, and ensure that we're supporting the needs of our, our campus, with each and every district meeting.
We are going to be meeting with all of the superintendents and the leaderships. And we're going to, and each director will present the partnership agreement. And in that meeting, we'll talk about all the work that we're doing together. And we're going to monitor this partnership agreement so that we make sure that we're holding each other accountable in a way that we're really supporting. It's not the accountability, but it's also probably making sure we take everyone in our 22 districts and make sure that we're addressing the needs in each district individually to support the needs of the districts.
Additionally, at the end of each school year, our specification directors in each of our partner districts will sit with superintendent members of the leadership team to talk about their personal evaluation and to ensure that they solicit feedback for growth opportunities for the upcoming school year. And that is our way of ensuring that we do have voice from both sides to ensure that we are supporting our partner districts and their unique needs as our community.
So, board members, we know that academic gains for every student is what we're after. And we know we've got, we've got work to do. But I feel very, very strong about the leadership that we have in place. Feel very strong about the partnership that we have in place. And I'll look forward to coming back to you on those data dialogue meetings throughout the course of the year to be able to demonstrate significant growth for students with special needs.
I appreciate you all being here because I really do feel the teamwork, the collaboration. When I'd ask questions, even when we were looking at our ELA, to make sure that SSD was part of that conversation. And so, to me, it's like I know that COVID, there's a lot of negativity associated with it. And to me, I really feel like it gave everybody the opportunity to look intrinsically to see how we could improve our collaborative relationship between the districts. So, I definitely felt that all throughout, even though I'm not doing the governing council currently. I miss my friends back with my governing council meetings, but we have adequate support, too. But I wanted to make sure to have everybody come back and have that one-on-one face again. So, I really appreciate you coming here this evening. Anybody else have any questions or...?
Just admiration and gratitude. Thank you all for taking care of our students, students that need that little extra. I have not met, I have not met one SSD teacher that says, "Well, this is just a job." You know, their passion is very evident. Their drive is there every minute of the day. And they treat every child like it's theirs. And I'll see how it goes.
And you truly are a very positive voice for a population of students that may not be able to voice their own support. So, I truly appreciate that.
I'd like to say, I haven't been on the board for a decade or anything. So, but I still, I just feel like since the beginning of when I first got on the board, I have seen an immense amount of growth and partnership between the school district and SSD. And I just thank you guys so much for that because it's so important. And I don't, you know, know what had changed or anything. I think you have made a very large impact into that area, so I'm very thankful for that. I just feel like there has been such a big improvement between our relationship with you guys.
I'm just going to chime in, too, because I've been connected with special school districts since 1989. And I really do feel like that this is, in the past four or five years, that we really have come a long way. And that special is very open. You know, it's not a love fest all the time. I mean, we have problem-solving sessions and we talk about what we need to do, but it's all professional and it's all about students.
So, thank you for that.
I remember my brother talking about starting the governing council and having to go to knock on doors to have people show up to make sure that the districts were actually representing for their students. And so, to see it grow from when he talked about it, like you said, in 1989, 1990, it was a very important aspect of his life. And so, I kind of hold it right here. So, thank you so much. I think we are ready for motion. You can go.
I move that we approve the special school district partnership agreement for 2022, 2023 school year.
Second.
Dr. Fowles.
Yes.
Mrs. Lomans.
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden.
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones.
Yes.
And I also both yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to 3.02, Board of Education Equity Statement. Mrs. Evelyn Gilliam.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
So, as you all are well aware, we first adopted this board's, this equity statement August of 2020 and put the caveat on it of re-adopting it annually so that we can make sure that it is relevant to the times that we are working and the students that we are serving. And so, that's our purpose this evening is to take a look at the pieces of the statement that we want to possibly update. So, of course, this is our vision and our mission. And this opening definition of equity, this is what the equity statement currently says in terms of what equity means. This is the piece we're going to look at a little bit more in depth this evening. So, we talk about student backgrounds, racial, ethnic, religious, gender, class, traumatic experiences. Don't limit the expectations. Last year, I believe, we updated it so that it said gender and gender identity. And these were the pieces that we looked at, the questions that we looked at to make sure that our equity statement matched what we wanted it to say. And then, thinking about, does it benefit? Does it impact various groups? What can be included to decrease or eliminate disparities? And does any language need to be clarified? So, this year, after we, last year, actually, after we approved redefining some of that lineage, that kind of clarified the groups that we were focusing in on, it came to my attention that we did not have ability in our line out in the first part. We have it within the statement, but we don't have it in that definition. So, what we're looking at this year with your support is to add the word ability in that parenthetical exclamation of groups and re-adopting the statement. So, this is what we're looking at now, is to have it read like this, to include ability with racial, ethnic, religious, gender, gender identity, class, and traumatic experiences. What questions do you have or what suggestions do you make?
I like that you added.
Well, it was, it came to us, and as we, you know, we always want to reflect and be responsive, and so at the point where it came to me, I was like, next year, so.
Not to ask the person's name, but who suggested that?
It, I don't remember, honestly. I know that it has come up in this group, we talked about it here, about the fact that it's down further in the statement, and it's not, it wasn't lined out in the definition. And so between us having a conversation here, and I know in our equity group, we've had conversations, that's, it came back, and I don't remember a specific group.
I just wanted to go back to them and tell them that's a good job.
Okay. If I don't remember, I'll just tell the whole equity.
There you go. Tell them.
That's, 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 that's good. I mean, we, we look to say we're, we're all inclusive in this, and if one word helps us describe that better, it's a good word to put in here.
And so board members, not only at the board level, at the governance level, but the, as we touch on it in our presentations, also, we're seeing more and more at the building level. This is part of the conversation at the building level. Certainly have not arrived, don't know that organizations ever arrived, and we have gaps in performance, but I feel like we're on the right path, and I think the touch of revisiting the statement on a yearly basis is the right approach in terms of the system to get at those more equitable outcomes that we're after, because we don't, we don't have those in this district at this point.
I'm proud of the fact that we have, I'm proud of the fact that we look at and it's a living document that we can change, discuss, and use on daily basis. I don't, I don't want it just being something that's up on the wall, we look at and now and it, and it sounds like this, this something is, is right there with us every day. And that coupled with the other things with SSD and things like that, if, if we could just bring out the best every day for our students and take care of every child, whatever their needs are, this is another tool to get us there that, that yes, let's do it.
So I'm kind of wish back to you.
So board members, there's a recommendation for you tonight to consider reapproval. Board always has the opportunity to take this work into a work session if you wish to do that in October and come back, or if you see fit to, to add the additional language around ability in the statement, we'd be making a recommendation for you tonight.
It would be with great pride and happiness that I would move that we did re-adopt the Board of Education Equity Statement as presented this evening.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. DeGardner.
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner.
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas.
Absolutely.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee.
Yes, thank you, everyone in the committee, and thank all of your support.
Absolutely.
3.03 SRO agreements, Mr. Michael Smith. Thank you so much for coming to the seat.
Thank you.
Hi.
Mike.
SRO meeting, here with your folks.
Right, I just brought that up. So can you wait for me to show you something? You okay? All right. Yes. All right, sorry. So Ritter has a strong relationship with our law enforcement across the district. St. Anne, St. John, and Breckenridge Hills provide school resource officers to, for our buildings. The agreements with the police departments include language that is in line with Ritter's mission, vision, and equity statement, and therefore I am recommending that the Board of Education approve the continuation of the SRO agreements through the 22, 23 school year, if you have questions.
Board members, if there's ever change to the language in the SRO agreements, if you remember, we did some significant work in the last couple of years around revising the SROs, there's no amended or changed language in any of the SRO agreements. There was a question that came up today around the cost, like the cost difference between St. Anne and St. John. Do you want to speak on that, Mr. Smith?
Sure. So, so St. John provides one officer for Ritter Middle School, and we, the Ritter School District pays half of that salary, the total salary, and that's $50,000. St. Anne has a different structure for how they want to provide officers to the school district, and so we pay half of two officers, half the salary for two officers. Another officer is paid more on an hourly basis, and then they donate a third officer, a fourth officer to the district. And then Breckenridge Hills provides their SRO free of charge, and that is through a grant that Breckenridge Hills have received for safety and security, and so that officer is fully free to the district.
How about we move and approve the continuation of St. Anne, St. John, and Breckenridge Hills SRO agreement for 2022, 2023 school?
Second.
Mrs. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner.
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you so much. 3.04 SRO agreements, Mr. Michael Smith. Thank you so much for coming to the seat.
Thank you.
SRO meeting.
Hi.
Mike.
SRO meeting, here with your folks.
Right, I just brought that up. So can you wait for me to show you something? You okay? All right. Yes. All right, sorry. So Ritter has a strong relationship with our law enforcement across the district. St. Anne, St. John, and Breckenridge Hills provide school resource officers to, for our buildings. The agreements with the police departments include language that is in line with Ritter's mission, vision, and equity statement, and therefore I am recommending that the Board of Education approve the continuation of the SRO agreements through the 22, 23 school year, if you have questions.
Board members, if there's ever change to the language in the SRO agreements, if you remember, we did some significant work in the last couple of years around revising the SROs, there's no amended or changed language in any of the SRO agreements. There was a question that came up today around the cost, like the cost difference between St. Anne and St. John. Do you want to speak on that, Mr. Smith?
Sure. So, so St. John provides one officer for Ritter Middle School, and we, the Ritter School District pays half of that salary, the total salary, and that's $50,000. St. Anne has a different structure for how they want to provide officers to the school district, and so we pay half of two officers, half the salary for two officers. Another officer is paid more on an hourly basis, and then they donate a third officer, a fourth officer to the district. And then Breckenridge Hills provides their SRO free of charge, and that is through a grant that Breckenridge Hills have received for safety and security, and so that officer is fully free to the district.
How about we move and approve the continuation of the St. Anne, St. John, and Breckenridge Hills SRO agreement for 2022, 2023 school?
Second.
Mrs. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner.
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas.
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you so much. 3.04 SRO agreements, Mr. Michael Smith. Thank you so much for coming to the seat.
3.03 SRO agreements, Mr. Michael Smith.
Thank you so much for coming to the seat.
3.04 SRO agreements, Mr. Michael Smith. Thank you so much for coming to the seat.
And do I have to?
Yes.
So I, of course, having safe and effective facilities helps us make the vision and vision for the district. Our facility should provide the best physical environment for learning to occur, and all district schools should provide consistent and equitable environments for learning. We are going to be discussing two proposed projects. One, security lighting at Moore Field, and do I have to be presenting a convention on the Ritter High School Fitness Center? So first, for Moore Field, there are several locations around the stadium that are extremely dark during square meters. There are security concerns due to that. In addition, two lights on each field pole are set up as security lighting from dusk to dawn. Install LED fixtures in strategically placed areas around the stadium will improve that security. And also, if we install LED on those security lights, we should be able to save significantly on electricity. Those are metal halide lights that burn all night, and there's a lot of electricity. GRP Wegman has quoted $51,672 to complete that project, and it is a proposition request. And therefore, I'm recommending that the Board of Education accept the quote, $51,672 from GRP Wegman for lighting upgrades at Moore Field, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Not only is this lighting upgrades, but you know, it's cost saving, major, too. That's, that's big, you know, and if we do our research, we can figure out the, the light of the LED light is years and years longer than anything we have, we put up there. I mean, they can last up to 10, 15 years under normal use. You know, and, and all the, all the other metal halide lights up there, if we replace those, we've cut all the light bill downs and so significant, so this is, this is not even just an improvement, it's, it's a, it's a great cost saver, and we can get a lot more lumens out of them as well. So this, this is very good for us.
And I've noticed that the school's already getting LED lighting, how well everything's lit, which is so much safer. People can see where they're going, there's not a trip hazard of trying to walk around in the dark. But of course, having it up at the high school so that everybody can see what's going on, because it's so dark in Samaria, so.
Got to, got to throw this out, you know, it's out there. Kudos to Mr. Smith, taking care of the parking lot in front of Northway of Hague. It's a lot better, it's a lot brighter. I feel like people can be a lot more safer being out in that parking lot without having to walk around with a flashlight to see where to go. It makes a huge difference, and I do appreciate that. So I would recommend that the Board of Education on the Ritter School District accept the quote, $51,672 from GRP Wegman for lighting upgrades at Moore Field.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner.
Yes.
Mrs. Lomas.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas.
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, so I would like to discuss the fifth set here of the high school. We've been doing work on this design. So I'll try to orient everyone. This is the front of the building along the main driveway of the school, and this is the entrance where it says, above it, it says gymnasium. These are the steps that go up to the old gymnasium. So this is between the main entrances over here and the pool entrance that is here. This is the old air, the old kitchen and cafeteria from long ago, that we've been using for custodial and maintenance, storage for a number of years now. And this back here is the current waiting room area, as well as some storage, it used to be locker rooms, and there's some, or lockers here, lockers back here, and I'll go into more detail, but so everybody, everybody's clear on where we are. So this is, again, the current waiting room. You come in these doors right here, and this is the main part of the waiting room now. This would be the training area, so we have a trainer full-time, and this would be the training area. Includes a closet, includes a bathroom in this area, otherwise it's very open for the trainer to use. This area back here would become the new custodial and maintenance area for storage and use. And then over here, we've, we're doing some renovations to these showers and, and restrooms. For an adult locker room, this would serve various purposes, one for visiting officials, another would, these would be two all-gender dressing rooms and showers, and these would be all-gender restrooms back here. So it can also be used by coaches, teachers, and actually, we could open up the fitness center to all staff or alumnus, where they could exercise even before school, and they could use this area back here also. Any questions on this part of the building? Going into the actual fitness center, again, this is the front of the school. The idea is to open this area up now, there's just two doors here on the inside with the ticket booth, there are two doors on the outside. We want to bring more glass in both of these to open up and bring more sunlight in, as well as create a couple of all-gender restrooms back here. This would be the main fitness area. We'll look at a more detailed layout, and this would be the main fitness area, this would be the cardio area with electronic cardio machines. Do have some storage over here, as well as the restrooms, and this would be the main door coming from the hallway into that. So this is the actual design layout and color layout that we have come up with right now. Again, this is the front of the building. This would be the main door that you would enter into the fitness center, and you can see that the big athletic R, the Ritter, the Rs on, on this part of the floor, and then all of this equipment will be mainly orange, some of it will be black as well, but mainly orange, and it will contain brand branding with either the R, the name Ritter, or Husky, Huskies, or Husky Head. On this side, we will have branding all along this wall. Not exactly sure what we're going to have yet, but it will have branding. This area has a window and a door, and then this area will be a mirrored wall, because this area here is all the free weights. So this area would be the hard rubberized floor, the black area there. This area over here would again be the rubberized floor to deal with weights. The orange area would be artificial turf, as well as the gray area would be artificial turf. So as we went through the design process, it was important to have this area for sprints, for drills, that's what these orange boxes are, where they can do the agility drills. These orange dots are a different drill that teams use. This whole area would have numerous televisions in it, as well as a sound system. These are eight half racks that's used for squats and other exercises with free weights. This area has five benches for bench presses. There's three different holders here for free weights, as well as holders here for free weights. This is a, another, I don't remember what it's called, but what I used to call it was universal gym, so that three or four people can be using those exercises at once. This area back here would be the cardio room. This would, this flooring would be carpet, mostly black, gray, and orange, and we would leave the half, well, it's about the third of a wall right now, about three foot tall of brick, we would keep that. as well as three parents, six student athletes and then two students that do not participate in athletics. As far as the equipment cost goes, it's, uh, through a purchasing contract, so, um, uh, you know, you could go out and get through this. Again, this is more of a, uh, of a individualized, uh, design. So this cost will include the flooring installed, the rubberized and the turf flooring and the carpet in the cardio room, uh, the electric cardio machi, electronic cardio machines and then that stuff. And then all of the great lighting equipment. And the grand total of that is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, tonight, what we're looking for is to purchase the cardio equipment at need time because it has electronics in it. Oh, I forgot to mention that in the cardio room, the elliptical crossstringers and the treadmills can hook up to wifi and have that increased, um, uh, technology to, to work, to work on those machines. But because of that, it's a ten to twelve month timeline. So we are cutting it short right now even, uh, on September eighth to try to make sure that everything is in, in August. So, uh, a reminder, this is Proposition S project. And so I am recommending that the board approve the purchase of the electronic cardio equipment tonight for sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars from the Fitness Solutions and we'll bring back the rest of the equipment at some point. But we can answer any questions you can.
I had a question about warranty.
Yes. So, uh, warranties vary depending on the equipment, of course. Um, the cardio, uh, generally it's one or two years on mechanical and elec, electronic components. There's only one, the treadmill has a one-year warranty on mechanical. On the frames, those run two, five, seven, ten years just depending on the piece of equipment. The benches, of course, the upholstery is not warranted very long because of course, uh, that can be, can be cut on purpose. Um, but generally the, uh, mechanical items run anywhere from five to ten years on the frame and the mechanics and the bearings and, and bolts, that's the bolts and hardware. Uh, everything else is about five years. Again, with the exception of upholstery, that's about, about what it's running.
I'm just thinking about the future because I would like this to be always a continuing wonderful state-of-the-art facility.
Yes.
And so I know if it's gonna be really used, which I'm hoping that it is, by all of our sports teams and those that are not in sports, but making sure that we always have everything up and running.
Right.
And connected to that, the recommended maintenance on those treadmills and so on, that would be kicking in?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, whatever they, whatever they recommend, we need to, we need to do. Now whether that would be our maintenance, uh, staff or some athletic staff, I'm not sure. I haven't got into the, to the proposal, uh, that details, I don't know if Drew will make that.
I have a question.
Yes.
As far as the, uh, custodial area back there, um, how much equipment do they have?
So all those force runners you see at night, there's about, I think back down to seven or eight that one time they're in there. And all of those have to be plugged in every night. So that's, that's a big part of it, that took up most of the wall, most of the one wall that was in that area. But, um, Mike, you know better.
Yeah, and then, you know, the, the supplies, so, so the towels and the mops and all of that. They had to store the replacement product, you know, from the other stuff, um, so, you know. So then they will also have a washer and dryer for their materials and everything. Because they, you know, the towels and everything, they, they wash those, clean those, so it's a lot of material storage. And then like Alex said, electric, uh, the monoride equipment storage.
And then is there?
Sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I, I forgot about the laundry here for custodial maintenance. They have, uh, mops and stuff that they brought, that they wash. And then we also have a laundry room back here, uh, so that, um, they can wash towels and they can relate to that.
Are there tools in that closet too? Cause there's still some breaking and moving. As far as the countertop, the spaces, there's a, one countertop, some top of the trench.
Gotcha. There, there are tools there as well.
Oh, great. So make sure that space is, you know.
What's the range of the treadmills manufacturer?
Uh, Life Fitness looks like, but I didn't, uh, I just figured it was a big system. But on the warranty, uh, stuff says Life Fitness. Uh, that, that could be, or it could be Advanced Exercise Fitness, I, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Is this a, is this a, do we know is this a local company, so if we have problems with it, or they, they be out here?
It is, yeah. They, they are actually located, uh, just on the other side of Hague. And so, uh, Drew and me actually utilized this company now where they're existing, um, and weight equipment and, and this.
So then they would then assemble, install? Yes. Include all this, which is a very.
I do have a question, um, just to clarify. So you mentioned that, actually two questions. You mentioned the adult locker rooms, um, in the space kind of where custodial area is.
Yes.
So is there work being done on our student locker rooms as well? I know this is progress money, but in general, are we doing work on our student locker rooms?
Not in this project. We have talked about, um, HVAC specifically for those locker rooms. But we have looked at those locker rooms, but we're not combining that with this project at this point.
So I think that's gonna be important in this space. I know this is a vision and everything and we got progress money specifically to do this, but also knowing like if we're doing something specific for adults in the community to come in, we also wanna be mindful and take care of our students and the student guests that we have coming in the spaces because our locker rooms in the high school, there's some opportunities there. Um, so just wanna be mindful of that. The other question that I had too was surrounding the, um, area and trying to make sure with like the bathroom that's in, in the actual workout area?
Yes.
Is that also gen, are those gender neutral?
Yes, those are all gender restrooms, yes.
Thank you.
So there is a pretty good size of people. And so how did we come to the conclusions? Was it, uh, make sure majority was happy or?
Yeah, I worked, um, really, really hard on making sure that I was, um, reaching out to what, what were the priorities? What, what things did, you know, did we have to have in this? Would be nice to have and then what are the drinks, you know? So they, they came up with, with those lists, put those together, had everybody rank those together and then kept bringing that to, back to the steering committee and then to focus groups to have them narrow that down so that we knew these are the things by the end of it we have to have in here would be nice. And then, you know, the drinks, you know. So we were able to get a lot of that in, almost everything into the design of the, of this, uh, of this space. It's, it, it really takes everything except for, you know, I think an indoor swim machine, you know. You made it into the, into the, into the area.
And I would say the, uh, training room as part of the large room was, um, preferred, but there's a hall there that we just can't, we can't do anything around. So, so, you know, we did the next best thing. It's adjacent, it's literally probably thirty to forty feet between the, well, from the cardio room door, it's probably twenty-five feet to the training room door. From the main door, it might be forty feet, but it is directly behind it. And all it's separating and it really is a, uh, six foot?
Oh, yeah, it's a narrow hall.
But we just couldn't get around that for the, but.
And for the plan that, uh, that has been designed, um, you know, we've visited, you know, several other schools. We do Pat, uh, and others. And we do believe that this design is far so fast what they have when it comes to branding and look and feel. We think this is really, so, I guess, I agree.
I'm so happy to hear that you have turf.
That was actually, that was one of those, it was ranked really high, it was.
There you go, we have turf.
I'm sorry, I do have another question.
Yes.
There's a lot, been a lot of reference with this space to be open to the community. Can you help me understand what that looks like as far as security getting into this space and where that's at on this particular design?
So at this point, it is not, I mean, the, the idea is that they would come in the front, uh, entrance of the driveway. When, if and when it is open to the community. So we have not designed a, uh, I mean, what we have designed is to be able to put a counter out in front at, at the point that that's needed. But we don't have that counter in this design right now. So it would, they wouldn't come into the building per se. They would, I mean, they wouldn't come into a hallway and go into that main entrance as we were talking. They would go straight into what now says gymnasium, right off the driveway. If, if and when we open it to the community. And that would be, that, that whole front would be more glass. Correct, correct. Both, right?
So then would be an additional cost to redesign or just add this particular?
It really would be just to add a counter, uh, you know, for somebody to stand there and check people in. And we just don't have that in this design right now. Cause that would, that will also take staffing, so we're not, we're not addressing that operation part of it at this point. I forgot one of the things. So as we open up this front, uh, to bring more day, bring more sunlight in, the last piece of branding was back here. We plan on having, uh, either the big R or Husky Head or something, or Husky Head if Huskies above it, that would be lit up at night. And hopefully with this opening and more glass, um, this would show through the whole way because again, this is gonna be glass too. Um, and hopefully even from the rock road, somebody can see that all the way through is, is the idea. We just gotta make it happen now.
Actually, board members, all of this, if you can tell, it's still in development. Like we're at the point where we're nearing completion. But why we're here tonight is to get these cardio, if you approve the cardio equipment, you know, we will likely be coming back to you for the approval of the construction project, October, November, or somewhere at that ballpark. And at that point, all of the fine details will be completely ironed out. So we're really kind of rushing to get this to you, uh, so that we can get your cardio equipment.
So if there's no other questions, do you want to start your motion?
I recommend Board of Education approve purchase of the electronic cardio equipment for sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars from Advanced Exercise Fitness Solutions.
Second. Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lones?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
With a caveat.
I agree with Mrs. Glover Jones that our other locker rooms need some attention somewhere in the future. The last time I looked at the locker rooms, restrooms and shower rooms in the swim area, they were in horrible condition. So could we at some near future date come up with a plan and discuss that?
So I'll, I'll just remind the board that we did not include that in the progress projects. I just wanna.
I, I understand this, this, this been, this been something neglected for a while. And Lisa brought it up again and I have to agree with her that this is one project, this is one thing. But I think we need to look at other locker rooms and other, other things like that.
So we get through this project, certainly get our arms around the scope, uh, because the, whether it be, um, the locker rooms in the center of the building or down towards the pool. Can't remember the last time that we've done work around those. We get work to get our arms around the scope of what we'll be talking about, to bring some numbers back to the board.
Right, and I look for it next week, right, but it needs to be somewhere on our radar.
And I mean, the, the thing I, the reason I ask specifically about the community because you mentioned it in the proposal, that's kinda how I feel and I may be wrong, maybe I'm getting things mixed up. I feel like that's how this was marketed to the community as far as part of that, some of that progress. Like, oh, well, fitness center for the community as well as for the students. But I'm hearing like that's not really part of the plan now. So I just want us to be mindful that in the space of, if that's how it was marketed, like so maybe I'm getting my information blurred in my spaces. But I just want us to be mindful that if we're saying now, it's not really ready for that or it won't be built or designed in that way at this point in time, so, like that. I may be getting my information blurred, but I just want us to be mindful.
If yes was present, I would, yes.
Okay, and I also.
Thank you.
You're gonna laugh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Thank you so much. Losing to three point oh five for chance to learning plans approved, Dr. Smith.
So board members, uh, again, looking for your approval of the return to learning plan. We're operating every thirty days, um, using this as a communication tool. We record the meetings, the meetings get posted, um, to continue to update the, uh, the community around where we are with the returns. I mean, this is not required because we're no longer under a state of emergency, uh, but I think, um, it's the right thing to do. Uh, our most recent COVID dashboard, again, this gets updated every Friday afternoon with the work of Doug, Michael Chance and Julie. We have a two percent threshold, but if you see in this data, uh, Ritter Middle School is closer uh, to that two percent threshold than any of our buildings have been to this point. Uh, our dashboard at Ritter Middle last Friday was at one point seven percent positive students. If Ritter Middle would hit two percent, then they would go mask mandatory for a period of not less than two weeks based on our current plan. Uh, based on the information we have at this point, it won't be finalized until tomorrow. Don't believe that these numbers have jumped significantly over where it is at one point seven percent. But if it would, uh, if they would eclipse or be at two percent, then Ritter Middle would be the first building to go back to mask mandatory. That would also be on the buses that serve, uh, Ritter Middle. Working on a communication, uh, don't want the first, uh, touch to be mask mandatory. Uh, so we're working with Doug Gray to get a, uh, quick message out to Ritter Middle families just to remind them that yes, the virus is still with us. Yes, we have this as a, uh, as a procedure if we hit a certain threshold. Uh, we do know that there's gonna be some pushback, um, to that because, uh, really in a lot of places and even me, we've got the wave from masks that are kind of hot aside, hot on line to some extent for a lot of people. Um, do expect, uh, expect that there'll be pushback on that, but it's something we're gonna work through in the names of, of safety for students and our staff. Uh, the presentation is consistent. I do think it's always important to look back to see where you've been to, to determine where you're going next. The archive of last year, there were a lot of changes around the return to learning plan. We moved away from, uh, quarantines to isolation of only symptomatic persons. No longer, we're close contacts quarantine. CDC process, uh, had changed, uh, went to five days. Uh, if a person is positive, that the person is away from the building. If symptoms improve, a person remains masked for days six through ten. That is the continued expectation. Uh, we went to mask recommended from mandatory on the twenty-second of, uh, February. Uh, maintain the trigger at two percent, which we continue to maintain. Um, districts across the county are in different places. There are many districts that do not have a trigger. Uh, many districts that are not maintaining a COVID dashboard as we are. Uh, I do think this continues to be the right work in terms of transparency by maintaining a dashboard. Certainly work to do, uh, and not doing it would free some staff up to, uh, to focus on some other things. But in terms of transparency, fear of staff, students and families, do think it's the right thing to, uh, to continue to do. We had been at times where there were some restrictions on spectators at events. Uh, we opened buildings back up to outside groups, all of that, uh, remains in place. Uh, we stay in contact with our, uh, transportation department. Uh, transportation department, uh, we do have a store of, uh, uh. Uh, transportation department, uh, we do have a store of, uh, disposable masks. If we start to see rises in other buildings, uh, we're gonna have to invest further in some disposable masks, um, to, to provide them to students as they need them. So I'm seeking your approval tonight of the return to learning plan. There have been no changes in the plan. I do believe that students, students, staff and families, as is.
Do they have any questions?
Let's do it. I move to approve the return to learning plan as presented by our superintendent.
Second. Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Moving to three point oh six, Board of Education, point two statements are shuffled over.
So, um, the Board of Education is seeking to fill a vacancy on the seventh member board. He was vacated by Miss Phil Greco who served on the Board of Education twenty-six years. Board announced the vacancy following a special meeting on August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Missouri law presents permit, excuse me, school district Board of Education to appoint individuals to complete the unexpired terms of office of vacancies until the next Board of Education election. The person appointed to miss Phil Greco's seat will hold the position until the April twenty-third school board election. Interested residents of the school district were asked to send a letter to me stating their qualifications and their reasons for wishing to be on the board by, uh, past Tuesday, September sixth. Um, Missouri law requires a person to be a U.S. citizen, at least twenty-four years of age, a resident's tax, resident taxpayer in the district and who have resided in the state of Missouri for one year. Board members are not paid for their service. The board will appoint a new member at its October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. The following people have applied for the vacant Board of Education seat. Uh, Eric Deepenbrock, Linda Henning, Robert Eaton, Kelly Adams, Renee Bronner and Emily Keller.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, number one to three point oh seven, personal recommendations, Dr. Michael James.
Here to present items one through thirty, law, personal recommendation report. Open any questions or comments you may have and ultimately ask for approval.
So number five, this person has accepted the offer?
So number five, that person accepted our offer and signed a contract with us in, um, March and then notified us on July twentieth that they actually accepted a contract with another district as well and had, was delaying their decision and had made a decision to work with the other district.
And so then that's why number eight comes in then?
Yes.
So just point of information, what do we do when we have a person on the contract and then they just tell us to go apply?
We have not been bringing their recommendation to the board for separation until we have found a suitable replacement, um, which is a minefield for policy. We have been telling them we, we, you know, hold them to their contract or consider them abandoned in their contract if we do not find a replacement. And we, we were able to identify the person number eight and they actually began sooner in school targets, so we're able to move forward with this recommendation. But it is challenging.
Uh, to me, to me, it's just frustrating that someone says, I will do something else, sign this contract and then they just, the level of integrity there is just at zero and I'm just trying to walk away from you guys this now.
You know, we've seen it through the hiring season this year. The market is very employee friendly right now and unfortunately there are some that are choosing to entertain multiple contracts.
And we're designing multiple contracts. We've done a weak span and then delaying their decision till, to a point they think this is very difficult to fulfill the position.
And is number twenty-one, is that new?
For that person.
Congratulations.
But nineteen and twenty, uh, this is a print yearbook. Do we still, I, I had a question, uh, just curiosity, do we still print, take yearbook?
We, we work with a company that she has participated in, um, designing and ultimately a company that's outsourced to print and provide.
I don't know if it was all electronic or anything.
It's an electronic design, digital design. It's been a number of years since I was in, forcing up the.
I just wondered if Chris emailed everybody and said, here's your yearbook.
Oh, yes.
That's an actual book.
That'd be great.
It is still a book. That's a tradition that, that high schools.
There's an idea right here, what'd you say, the QR code?
Yes.
There you can see.
And if you remember, at the beginning of my tenure, uh, the high school had gotten into a contract where there was a set number that had to be ordered, three hundred and fifty per year. And it was just, as a result of that, high school got significantly underwater because they couldn't sell all of those, so they renegotiated a new contract that's much more favorable to the school where there's not that significant of that. And, and nineteen and twenty are, that, that's actually a middle school position, so excited to see that the middle school is doing that for.
Why don't we move to accept personnel recommendations, one through thirty-one, as presented?
Second. Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will move to three point oh eight, board member comments. And I wanted to start off first because we need to discuss about moving the tax rate hearing and the board interviews from the twentieth to the twenty-ninth, Thursday at six P.M. And so I wanted to kind of put that out there. I'm okay with that date. Um, Mrs. Glover Jones, I think we talked about that and so I just wanted to share it.
I would greatly appreciate it.
Yes. The Thursday.
What time?
Six P.M.
Where?
Boardroom.
Boardroom. So Mr. Gardner will never hook me for you?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lons?
It is much better.
Then I think that.
Yeah, great job, yeah.
It's my twenty-year anniversary.
On that date?
My husband, yes.
On the twenty-eighth or the twenty?
Twenty-eighth.
All right.
We have it. Well, no, I wouldn't want you to change it to the.
I just wanna make sure.
Well, you just start celebrating without you, then you.
Excellent. Does anybody else have anything else to share?
I think we're doing just a great start everywhere here. Uh, it's a big credit for a lot of people here and, you know, yeah, we have a few bumps in the road, the organization that has diagnosed some odd people, those employees and how many square acres on the roof, uh, sixty-five hundred kids to take care of. Maybe we have a bump in the road here, man, but, uh, I think we're, to vice presidents and superintendents, we, we're up a fighting start. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did wanna say, um, thank you to everybody at the admin building who are adjusting. I know that the healthy kids, Mrs. Van came in over the summer right at the timeframe where students were registering for school, so appreciate you accommodating, accommodating the, um, asks from the team that was on site servicing the kids. I did also wanna say that for those who are serviced, over eighty percent of them, they've been, had their cases closed out, so those students are, uh, in the district, they have their team cleaned and ready to go over the school year. We had an overwhelming response, I should say, they had an overwhelming response where we actually ended up with like a hundred kids on a waiting list. Um, so I will say that that work that is going to be going, conversations going on with peer S T L for dental care, there is such a great need in our district. Um, but just to know that the team does appreciate all of the accommodations that were done at the district office and throughout the community during that timeframe. Much appreciation.
Thank you.
So I wanted to add, um, a big thank you to the coaches and the athletics and activities group. Um, I have noticed coaches writing stories, sharing successes of all of our athletes and activity participants way more than we have, uh, in the past. And so just super excited to see that because when kids see their accomplishments they put out there, it just means the world to them. So I think that is just fantastic and I notice that it's the coaches that are going out there and really writing those things and putting them out there. So I'm super excited and thankful for that. And then I wanted to recognize our students. You made a point and I had typed it up too. I have heard wonderful things about our students participating, like coming and cheering on, like all the different activities and athletics and everything. And it has just been like a very big uplifting school spirit thing. And so I hope our students keep doing that throughout the year. Um, I have to share one story. As the girls', uh, softball team was, uh, finishing up beating Encarnate Word, the football team was done practicing and they were walking by and just cheering them on like so like loud and everything. It was just really neat to see them going, you know, being camaraderie for each other. So, so I just wanted to share this. I think that's.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I think it's a huge reflection on our year from last year to this year and how that sense of community is really building.
Yeah.
Anybody who's got anything to share? Everybody's good. All right. Thank you so much for sharing. We'll move to the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, either four point zero one through four point zero five as presented.
Second. Anybody have any questions?
No questions. I did wanna say, um, I talked to Dr. Kilwright about this today, just to give a heads up. Julie and Dr. Stewart, I will be reaching out just about the G.T. program evaluation, just kind of on a line, in the lineup with some of our equity work that's being done in the district. We wanna get a better understanding of how we're doing that on our, at our gifted center, especially like over the last couple of years with COVID. I know things are different and we're getting back acclimated, so just be mindful of that. Board members, if you did not read that one in detail or if you have any additional questions, I, I'm gonna have a side meeting with them as well, so.
Second. All right. Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, then we will move to closed session, five point oh one, reconvening closed session, six point oh, zero two one. So move.
Start again.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Glover Jones?
Yes.
And I'd also like to have recess for about ten minutes.
Thank you.